Good evening and welcome to the City Council's Special Meeting of Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Two items on the agenda, the first of these is a presentation of the Norman Public Safety Report, and they've asked us as council if we'll keep our questions to when they're in the position to take questions, instead of just blurting them out like we normally do. So would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Robert Finn, I'm a Senior Manager with Matrix Consulting Group, and I was the lead for the fire project.
Thank you. And I'm Richard Brady, I'm the President of Matrix Consulting Group, I was the overall Project Manager for the assignment, plus the police side.
Thank you. Would you like to proceed?
Sure. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to present close to 400 pages of material on this police and fires report that we've been working on for the past six or seven months with your two departments. We have a presentation that we're going to show you here, which summarizes of this, we consider them two projects, I realize it's a public safety study, but we had separate teams working on police and fire, and so it's going to be good to separate those out. I will give a common introduction to both of the studies. Robert will first summarize the fire study, and then I'll talk about the police study. So just the, the structure of the presentation for each one of these project reports that we'll be going through today, is provide a brief summary about our firm, and what we were asked to do in this study. Talk about our principal findings, and our findings and our conclusions and recommendations are broken down in two ways in both of these reports. One is an assessment of current staffing and operations, and secondly, they are, there are projections for staffing over the next 10 years for both police and fire. So first of all, a little bit about Matrix Consulting Group. We are in actually our 23rd year of providing services to local governments around the country, a little bit in Canada as well, but we've worked with over 1,800 municipalities and counties across the country. We do a lot of things for local government, we do HR studies, public work studies, we're doing a fee study for Norman, in fact, right now. But our public safety practice is by far our largest practice within the firm, and we have worked with over 400 police departments and over 400 fire departments around the country, a few internationally as well. What we are known for is a blend of analytics, and I think as you look through the report and as we summarize it here this evening, that you'll see that the way we look at workload and services and community service really drills down into looking at what the outcomes are for the community, and how, things like utilization of staff. But that doesn't blind us from the fact that it's important to get input from staff in this study. And we heavily interviewed within the two departments, used employee surveys to get input from most of the employees in the department about the things that they feel they're doing well, what the barriers are for them to do better, and things like that. So there was an interactive process as we went through this, past six or seven months of work for your two departments, so that as we went from facts to issues to recommendations, we met with command staff to talk about where we were at each part of the project, and to tailor fit the recommendations so they could work best for Norman. I think the thing, the real value in having an external look at yourselves in this way in your public safety departments, is the independence and objectivity. And the work methods we use to do our work, in the context of all the other studies we've done in Oklahoma across the United States, helps us do that. So that's a little bit about who we are. What we were asked to do, and the study objectives are the same for both in police and fire, is first of all, to gather information, from workload information from computerized sources and other kinds of sources, and with the input we got from staff, to develop an assessment of the work that's being done out there about the services that are being provided to the community, as well as in these two pretty big departments, the services that they provide internally within the departments. To compare those services to best practices in the police and fire industries, in terms of response, but also in terms of investigations or fire investigations, or internally in terms of human resources, financial, financial affairs that are done within the departments and things like that. To evaluate staffing, the staffing needs today within the two police department, and to look at ways to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of staff now, we didn't just look at metrics, as important as metrics were, we looked at ways to improve the utilization of staff, and things like redeployment and things like that, to improve service to the community. And then to look at where the community is going, in terms of development over the next 10 years, and to look at what impacts that would have on fire stations, and on staffing in every function within police and fire. And as I mentioned before, we worked collaboratively with the two departments as we went through this. So I'm going to turn it over to Robert, and he's going to start off with sort of a high level summary of what we came up with in the fire portion of the study, and then I'll go backwards and talk to you about some of the key findings, conclusions, and recommendations.
Good evening. So some high-level conclusions as related to the study, the first of which, there was a citizens' survey conducted, and the residents expressed a desire for rapid response services, and 47% of the respondents felt like the service level and speed of response has declined over the past three years. It was true in your suburban and your rural areas, but there actually was a slight improvement in response travel times in your, in your urban corridor, when we, when we looked at the computerized dispatch data that we used. The call volume for the fire department has increased significantly over the past 10 years, roughly 79% from about 11,000 to just over 19,000 since 2014. So, so you've seen a significant increase in, in call volume, most of which are medical assist-related calls, that's, that's your primary call type. But there's going to be a need for staffing increases, both in, in terms of your ability for an effective initial response, and we'll kind of talk about that in a minute, but also for an effective response force. So in the report, you'll see tables that show what different types of fire calls and EMS calls have critical tasks and the number of people. So, so if we're looking at a single-family home, for example, 16 people on scene can mitigate a normal 2,000 to 2,500 square foot house fire. But if, if you're going to the embassy suites, and, you know, you have multiple floors, and say the fire suppression systems aren't functional, all of a sudden, that number jumps to 50 people to be able to effectively mitigate a, a more of a high-rise situation. So, so that's in the report, and we talk about the difference in those effective response Besides the need for new stations, there are also specifically stations one, two, and five, that are in need of significant renovations or replacement, and in fact, we, we recommend the first replacement would be station five, and relocating it as, as other stations are built, as, as the rural areas, as that, toward the East Platte Lakes start to develop. So you're going to, you're going to hear in fire, really four different components that we use to evaluate the effectiveness of, of the response. The first two are what we call controllable situations. So call processing is the time from 911 rings, the dispatcher answers the phone, and processes the call, and gets your units en route. When you're monitoring that performance and, and determining how well it's working, you can, through improvements, system improvements, and, and reductions in the number of questions or different things, you can reduce that time, and to the customer, now it started, still look like, well, the fire department's getting here quicker, because you're, you're shortening the, the front end. The same with turnout times, that's the time it takes the crews to get up, get to their apparatus, put their gear on, and go in route to the call. So the quicker they accomplish that goal, the faster it appears that they, they arrive to the emergency scene. The travel time component is just that, once the wheels are rolling, how long it takes them to get to where the emergency is. Well, in a fixed facility response, like a fire station to a call, it depends on where the call is, if it's around the corner, it's quicker, if it's further away, it, it takes longer. So short of building more stations, improving the road network, it's, it's a difficult thing to, to remedy quickly, so it's a really shortening those first two, since they're controllable, is the most important thing. And then the last is that effective response force, how well can you gather a force that can mitigate the types of risks that are most likely to occur in Norman? You'll see a whole section in the report on, on the various community risks, the likelihood they, they are to occur, and then what the impact is on the fire department resources. So the first thing, when we, when we looked at your city, it became very clear that a one-size-fits-all approach is not going to work here. So the National Fire Protection Association has a standard, number 1710, and it's for the staffing and performance of career fire departments. So not a volunteer department, but, but staffed with career professionals, and their, their standard says that four minutes, 90% of the time, is the, is the target. Well, that's great if, you know, your city's built out to the point that, that's an achievable target, but even looking at your urban core, and I'll show you in a minute, that you're not able to achieve that. The Center for Public Safety Excellence takes a different approach, and that's the organization that accredits fire departments, so it's a voluntary accreditation, but it meets industry-recognized best standards for the development of your performance targets. NFPA 1710 does have a clause in there that the authority having jurisdiction, so in this case, the council, can set locally adopted performance goals. The Center for Public Safety Excellence says, you should look at the previous three years of data, which is what we have in here, and use that as your baseline, so this is, this is telling the public, this is how well we can do today, and then determine if that's acceptable, and then set your benchmark target. So gold standard, NFPA 1710, four minutes, 90% of the time, it's not going to work here, not by the lake, not from the lake all the way over to station nine, and not on the western portion of your community where the, the lots are larger and the home distances are further apart. So we looked at using a urban, for your urban core, and that's where most of those calls are occurring, you can see stations one, two, three, four, seven, in that, that urban core along I-35 and, and the university, and then going to suburban, when the population dropped below 1,000, but was still more than 500 people per square mile, and then rural, specifically as you got out past station nine toward the lake where stations five and six are. And that, that's going to allow you to plan better as growth occurs, so the turnpike that's planned on the north, and then the, the north-south turnpike that's a little bit further toward the lake. So as these projects develop and developments go in, and your population densities and risk profiles change, it allows you to understand as a council, okay, this area is now moving from rural to suburban, or it's moving from suburban to more urban, and, and we've built in response time targets that make sense and are credible from a national best practice from the Center of Public Safety Excellence, for you guys to, to potentially adopt as a, as a local performance target. And then that just tells you when you should add the additional resources, and when those targets are going to occur. So like I said, the travel times have increased in your suburban and rural areas, they've decreased slightly in the urban areas over the three years, but you do have an issue of, of call concurrence, so that's multiple calls occurring at the same time. 28% of the time, only one call happens, and 62% of the time, you have up to four calls happening. So why is that important? Because when station two is on a call, and the second call comes in, and it happens to also be in station two's district, well now, another station, one or four, most likely or three, if it's down toward the south, has to come and respond to that emergency, so those response travel times then are longer. So you didn't have unit utilization rates that were, that were so high that the two together are, are a cause for alarm, but it, it was something that you definitely want to, want to keep an eye on, knowing that your system typically has multiple calls occurring when they, when they occur. Excellent. So this map on the upper right is that, that four-minute map I was talking about, so NFPA 1710, four-minute travel time standard, you could see the gaps that exist in the, in the current system. So it was clear to us from this initial mapping that we probably didn't want to use the four-minute travel time standard for, for future planning. When you get to rural areas, 10 minutes is more common, so we did a 10-minute map for the two stations out by lake, just to, just to have that for comparative purposes. But you can see, even in both, both these standards, there's, there's gaps in the ability to effectively cover the city in, in either four or, or 10 minutes. So that's, that's when we begin working with the fire personnel and, and, you know, having discussions with them about, okay, 1710 is not, not going to be the correct standard, what, what should good look like in, in your urban areas versus suburban, versus rural, so that we can phase any, any planned growth out, and, and come up with what, what are fiscally responsible, but still reasonable standards to provide a level of service that your citizens expect and reserve. So the, the next issue is, is the effective response force. Like I said, 16 personnel for a normal residential structure fire, you can see over here, the area that 16 personnel can reach within eight minutes, and then we could only get to eight personnel as you move further east, using that as a standard because of the limited number of resources, but that, that's 14 minutes and the ability to get eight personnel there. So, so you can see, there's, there's gaps in the ability to form that effective response force, as well as the initial response time performance, which furthers the, the need for, for more resources for the fire department. Your, your other issue is that there's just a time and distance for your neighboring agencies to be able to, to fill that, especially in the, in the urban core area, because there's, there's nobody immediately adjacent to you, you guys cover, cover quite a bit of land. So some of the key findings, call processing, we weren't able to analyze it as it was buried as, as part of what, what we believe in, in the turnout time. So best practice for call processing would be one minute, 90% of the time. If, if in fact, that is happening, then you'd be looking at a minute 17 for your turnout times, which are actually better than the minute 30, minute 20 to minute 30 recommendations for, for turnout time performance, but because we don't know exactly where the call processing time was buried, it's, it's unknown. Your travel times, six minutes 35 seconds in the urban, over the three years, 6:41 in suburban, so that's your far west, and then kind of out toward station nine, and then 9:27 in the rural. So when we looked at this current performance, we felt that 6:35 is, is too long for, for the urban areas, because the best practices are four minutes, and then accepted practices for urbanized areas, in, in the industry is typically five minutes or, or better. So, so that's where we saw the need for improvements. You need slight improvement in the suburban areas, 6:30 is accepted there, so, I mean, you're within 10 seconds, and then 10 minutes for the rural areas, so currently, you're, you're performing at an acceptable level in the rural areas for that first unit. Like I said, in order to improve response time performance, it's either new stations or roadway improvements, both of which are not inexpensive endeavors for you. So there's, for the fire service, there'll be some new stations needed to improve that response time performance. You also have a practice of cross-staffing a lot of apparatus, so where that's problematic again is with the call concurrence issue. So if you're cross-staffing an engine and a rescue, and the engine is out, and then there's a vehicle crash on the interstate, and the rescue is needed, there's nobody to, to, to take the vehicle. So in order to improve the effective response force, we looked at reducing some of the cross-staffing that occurs, and increasing the staffing on the aerial apparatus to, especially as you guys go more vertical with some of your developments, so getting the appropriate staffing on, on the aerial apparatus is important. And then, like I said, that future growth and development that's both planned and coming in the city with, with new roadways, further expansion of, of the university, and then other planned growth and development, you know, is, is going to dictate kind of the timing for when the additional resources are needed. In, in your administration portion of the fire department, there's a need to formalize career development and succession planning. Right now, your, your training division is one person, so obviously, they're focused on creating training, doing training, assisting in training, and all the other administrative tasks that are associated with that, so there are some recommendations to, to increase staffing with training to allow these, these further improvements to occur. There's also a need for additional administrative support in various areas of the department, and we'll talk about those. Fire prevention, developing a policy that shows inspection frequency will help. Most departments have gone away from the every commercial occupancy every year, to kind of a risk base where your general office, so a, a place like City Hall, is inspected say every three years, and moderate risk occupancies every two years, and then your higher-risk occupancies where large loss of life, or historical value, or asset value to the city are inspected annually. So, so getting that frequency and developing that, because unlike your planning and development inspectors, once you construct it, now the fire department owns it for the life of the building. So every time you add a commercial occupancy, that's one more thing that they have to put on their inspection calendar and continue to make sure it's inspected according to the inspection standards. And then currently, the fire prevention folks are housed out of a station, really don't have the best office locations, really don't have appropriate facilities for their vehicles, equipment, and supplies that they need, so, so looking at some facility improvements for, for the fire prevention personnel is an important step moving forward. In training, there's an unfunded health and safety officer position. One of the things that we noted during our facility inspections is that many of your apparatus exhaust systems are, are not operating effectively, and need to be repaired or replaced, which is important, because there's a big cancer initiative in fire stations in terms of health and safety of, of the personnel, making sure gear's washed after, after fires, making sure it's stored separate from vehicle exhaust, getting that vehicle exhaust out of the buildings. So those are all things that that health and safety person does, as well as serving as a safety officer on emergency scenes, to make sure that the, the safety of personnel is maximized, both in, in the day-to-day operations, as well as during emergency operations. And then there's going to be additional instructional and supportive systems needed in, in training, like I said earlier. So the strategic initiatives, we looked at adding a full-time data analyst to the fire department to improve the use of data for decision-making. It's, it's important for them to begin to measure, analyze, and, and understand the, the data and, and their performance, and, and having a data analyst to, to assist in these endeavors is important, and it's a best practice that, that most fire departments, certainly organizations your size, have that position in place to make sure that, that they, they're using data and making the best decisions based on response data, risk data, and the, the other data points that are important to, to measure. Looking at adding another full-time instructor to the, to the training division, let the training chief focus on training calendar development, curriculum development, and the administrative oversight of training, but having somebody to assist with the instruction of, of the actual training programs. Again, establishing those workload targets for fire and life safety personnel is going to be important, because your, your folks aren't just doing business inspections, they're also responsible for fire investigations, public education, and, and other duties, so, so establishing what those workload targets are, so, so you know when they, when additional personnel are needed. So as, step one is get the frequency, step two is look at how much work can they effectively accomplish during the year in terms of inspections, investigations, and the others, and then, and then determine the staffing plan, and then formally establishing performance standards. So the one minute for call processing, the minute and 30 seconds for turnout times, five minutes for your urban response areas in terms of travel time, six minutes and 30 seconds in your suburban areas, and then 10 minutes in the rural areas, and, and have the fire department regularly report on that performance, so you can understand how it's changing as development occurs. A new station comes online, see what, see what happens, and, and how it, how it affects everything, so that you're making decisions based on that performance data, and, and how well the fire department is, is actually performing based on the, the performance targets that, that you as a council have adopted for this community. Minimum staffing increases in station eight and nine by one, one person on each shift over the next three years, to get five personnel on shift. So the interesting things out there, unhydrated in areas, so you've got tankers that need to be deployed to, to ensure an effective water supply, that's also where the brush trucks are, plus you've got the engine companies. So if any one of the apparatus is, is gone, and you're, and you're doing a, a three-person, say, minimum staffing, then there's nobody to take the tanker truck, there's nobody to, to respond in the brush unit, so making sure those, those stations are staffed appropriately so that those other units that are, are needed for an effective response, particularly in the rural areas. Can you carry? Increasing the minimum staffing of the two ladder companies from, from one personnel to, to four personnel, there's a number of tasks that, that need to occur. So the way it currently is, is you've got a person driving the ladder truck, then they would also be the person establishing the water supply, there'd also be the person trying to operate the ladder, and it's, it's too many tasks for, for one person to do. The ladder companies are also traditionally responsible for search and rescue operations, overhaul of the fire scene, protecting property that can be protected, so, so there's, there's a number of functions that require a fully staffed team, and, and one person on ladder truck can't, can't handle the duties, and as more vertical development occurs, there's more, more response needs for those ladder companies. The first station that we looked at, doing was station 10 in the southern region of the city, looking at staffing that with an engine company. So because of your relief factor, so in, as we're looking at fire staffing, 24-hour shifts, so if you're going to have a minimum of four people on an apparatus for the, the three shifts, that's, that's 12, but because of vacation, sick time, military leave, the various things that cause leave, and with your relief factor, it requires basically what, an over hire of one person. So, so you would staff with five scheduled, and typically, four would be, would be available to, to report to work, and, and that would be what's considered your minimum daily staffing, but you want to overstaff, because otherwise, anytime anyone takes off, you're paying overtime rates to backfill for that, that extra position. The next would, would be beginning to, the replacement of station five with a relocation a little bit further south, just to the area north of highway nine, and, and that, with the 10-minute travel time performance out there, is still going to give you improved travel times, specifically with the, the addition of the next station north of, of the lake as that, as that turnpike development occurs. Once station 10's complete, your span of control for your battalion chiefs reaches a point where you're going to need a, a third battalion chief. a point where you're gonna need a, a third battalion chief on shift every day to ensure that span of controls and, and effective supervisory oversight of emergency scenes can occur. So once, once that station ten comes online, it's, it's time to add another battalion chief. And then again, station eleven up to the north as that development occurs and, and those thresholds are hit to where, where you're gonna need that. Again, another engine company up there with five personnel scheduled, four person minimum on each shift. Next. So longer term, now getting into the kind of the three to five-year range, looking at upgrading that part-time administrative technician to a full-time position and then adding an additional part-time administrative tech to the office of the fire chief, adding a public information officer to the fire department, social media, public education. Information is, is, is critical for the, the fire department to be able to get out in a timely manner. So having a person dedicated to those tasks of, of making sure their social media, their website, their community outreach is effective is important. It was something desired by the community in the survey to see more frequent communication from both the police and fire departments. Adding a full-time administrative support to the, to both training and, and your fire prevention. So as more commercial buildings come online, there's more inspections that have to be scheduled, so getting administrative support so that the inspectors can focus on inspecting and somebody else is doing the scheduling, answering the phones, you know, schedule follow-up inspections and, and the other tasks. And then getting some more clerical assistance in that, in the training for scheduling classes, you know, making sure the, all the components of, of putting on effective training programs administratively are able to be taken care of. Relocating fire prevention as these new stations come onboard, planning for appropriate space for fire prevention in a future location. They're, they're similar to the police where it, it doesn't necessarily matter where they're located because once, once they arrive, pick up their tools, then they, they go out to, to their districts to do their inspections, similar to police officers, you have one, one police station and then they all go out to their districts to, to do their patrols, so the same thing. But, but finding a, an appropriate sized space for both the vehicles, the equipment as well as the proper accommodations for personnel to be able to review plans, store critical evidence during the fire investigations and those things. Then staffing the rescue company with a scheduled staff of, of four, but a minimum staff of three and that will let them be effective in, in their duties of responding to vehicle accidents, to do the extrication, assisting on all structure fire responses for any structural collapse or other issues. And then once, once it is staffed relocating them to station two, to align better with where the, the typical risks are of, of their, their response needs. Now getting longer term in, into the five-plus year range, looking longer, additional aircraft crash fire rescue training for personnel and, and written really all personnel in the department, not just the folks at, at station seven, but with the move to the SCC, there's the expectation that air traffic's gonna increase. I know the University of Oklahoma has some plans for potentially expanding the number of flights that come in and out of the airport. So, so getting more proficient, making sure that they're, they're able to effectively respond to aircraft emergencies, especially as that, that growth occurs. Adding another instructor, this time focusing on the, the emergency medical services needs, that's an evolving portion of your business. And as, as you move to more advanced life support services citywide, which was another desire of the community, that requires more hours, more specialty in terms of the, the types of trainings, so getting an EMS specialist in there to do, to do those needs. Having a work group with communications to improve the capturing of report times, it's not gonna happen overnight, but if you get tactical dispatch plans in. Typically what, what we realize in, in the communication setting is when the law enforcement agency is responsible for the dispatch function, police officers need a lot of information. They wanna know the color of the car, what's the person wearing, how they are and do. The fire personnel wanna know, is it on fire or are they hurt? You know, and, and then you've got, you know, as, as you can see, five, six minutes and thirty seconds, up to ten minutes to, to get us the other stuff before we get there. But, but getting their, their calls processed quickly with, with less, less information on the front end and then more as, as they're responding to give them better detail is, is important. So just establishing a working group to, to improve that capturing of times so that they can report it with the data and, you know, the true performance of each one of those response elements. We found it beneficial to add timers to fire stations, so when you establish that turnout time performance target, the, the personnel can see it. They're, they're inexpensive, they go off when the, when the alarm goes off and they're able to, to clearly understand if, if they're meeting that minute thirty-second target that we recommended. And then, then it's monitoring that expansion. So I know when the project started, there was some litigation involving the turnpikes. It, it appears like the east-west one is, is progressing probably in a shorter timeline than the north-south portion. So, so just monitoring that expansion so that you understand when it's time to start planning for the, the station twelve around hundred and eighth northeast and, and Franklin. And then getting foam capabilities for any future apparatus that are added to station seven to, to provide a more effective fire suppression for aircraft emergencies. And then we can ask, ask fire questions now or we wait till after?
I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna start with foam and then we, we've had these problems with PFAS and all kinds of others, the contaminants that go into the ground. Are there new kinds of foam other than EP, whatever it is?
Yeah, they, they continue to evolve and, and develop more environmentally friendly foam capabilities for apparatus. So the...
I would like to add that we're currently using municipal green foam that meets all those standards, it's not toxic, it meets that. We have those at each station. Right now, we do have foam capabilities that are limited in their scope, but we do, we do use foam that is safe for people and environment.
Thank you, sir.
And we have, we have ordered also through budget request, we've also ordered the foam trailer and had that requested for a couple of years now for aircraft type.
Specifically for airport, airport response.
It'll be up at seven.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hornet?
Yeah. You mentioned the almost double the calls from ten years ago and mostly being medical calls. Is that, on your analysis, is that because we weren't, fire department wasn't responding to as many medical calls then? Is that the reason why it's almost doubled? And is it because we've enhanced, I guess, our certifications, our ability, your training for fire department to respond to those things?
I would have to defer to the fire department for the driver of that. We can only tell you what the data told us. So it's not uncommon for suburban-type communities like you that medical calls are the predominant driver. You know, forty years ago funeral homes ran the ambulance service and now there's professional ambulance services, sometimes fire-based EMS, but typically fire is a first, at, at, you know, at a minimum, a first responder component because they can get there, start the initial care for the patient and then a transport ambulance shows up a little later that, uh, transport the patient after that initial care is, is rendered. But I don't know if you have no...
You have a combination of issues going on. First of all, fire prevention codes, fire codes becoming better and better, construction becomes better. So you're starting to see a reduction in the amount of actual fires happening that's assisting in the, in lowering the number of overall fires, but you're also seeing an increased number of like medical assists and things like that because we've got, we have a significant unhoused population that we all know about and there is a significant number of calls that happen to that population, especially station one. Station one consistently goes over four hundred calls a month because, and a lot of that is due to that, to that population. So you see a lot, a huge boost in the number of medical calls based upon those factors as well. So, and then percentage-wise, when you're reducing fire calls and increasing medical calls, it's gonna, it's gonna lopside the, the percentages between each other.
Councilmember Hornet, one thing we have noticed is we've got a lot more fire stations than we have ambulance centers. So in all likelihood, those guys are closer to you than the, the closest ambulance. So thank goodness, you know, they're, they're closer, there are more of them on shifts. So the likelihood that a firefighter gets to you first in a medical aid call, it, it's very likely.
Yeah, and I s- and I'm sure there's more car crashes in Norman than there were ten years ago, those types of things, more, more of a city, spread-out city than it was ten years ago. And I do read the weekly report, the fire report from your manager's report and people do notice that there aren't that many fires actually, that the fire department does spend a lot of the time, is responding to medical calls and things like that, crashes and that fires, as they mentioned, as codes and fire suppression has gotten better, less fires thankfully in Norman. So I thought that was just an interesting data point. And then the staffing part, so I, I wasn't able to read the hundred and ninety-seven pages yet, so I was wondering, what, what is the total recommended staffing? That I saw several different ones, admin and of course staffing of potentially three new fire stations. What total number of staff do we need in the...
So, so for each one of the, the new stations, you're looking at fifteen staff. So, so there's forty-five. Then upgrading the two ladders with, with minimum staffing of four, so you're gonna have to add four to each shift times two. So you, so that's another twenty-four for the ladder staffing, bringing the rescue staffing up, up to fours, another dozen, and then adding the personnel to one, one per year for the three years to the, the two rural stations is gonna add another three people per shift, so, so nine per station, so eighteen for the two stations out there. And then the support personnel for training, fire prevention, you have four folks in fire prevention, the admin assistant, the admin in training and prevention, so another, another four, four to five civilian personnel. So it's, it's significant over the, over the next ten years, the number of personnel.
About a hundred and four, a hundred and five?
Sworn personnel, it's a hundred and fourteen and non-commissioned is, sorry, I just blanked out, nine, I believe.
So yeah, yeah, about that many new, but, and you were thinking that fire station twelve would be something that would be ten to twenty years out there probably?
Definitely more than the five. It's gonna depend on, on development out there.
What things happen.
So that's, that's always the wild card is when, when does the litigation end, when's the roadway go in and when does, oh, you decide to build off-campus housing in that area, so.
The, my other question was about the officing for fire prevention. So are they not at the NIC? I thought that's what the NIC was supposed to be for, was to house investigations and police and fire, so is that...
Got personnel here at City Hall, personnel at station one, I don't know if there are anybody's at the NIC full-time?
We have one at admin, which is myself, one here in planning, and then we have four inspectors at station eight where we took the old conference room and converted it. We converted three personnel into twenty-four hour shifts. Now we have a quick response any fires or any kind of, especially we have events and the weekends and everything, we have somebody here. So they had to convert half that conference room into a bedroom. So we're all, they're former, crammed in there.
That's a newer station. So is the NIC just being police stuff now? Is that...
Oh, look, majors.
Police and we have some other outside agencies.
Primarily, yes, the space they formerly occupied was the space that when they were not in it was what HR was in, which is now currently not being used, but...
Based on the remodel.
At some point.
Okay. And so we need a new space for investigations to be, that would be separate from the station? Attached to a station or what do you...
Could be attached to a station in terms of where you've got some acreage where you could, you know, add on or build a separate building.
Station ten is, would be an ideal.
Okay. Okay, that was the questions I had on that so far.
Thanks, sir. If I may comment on the station twelve, it's not just hinging upon the turnpike. There's currently a pretty large area to the nor- on the northern side, north of station six, all the way out to the lake. And as far as the tip goes up, the very, the, the two square miles at the top, that whole area is well underserved by station six. It's, you're looking at a fifteen to twenty-minute response time in that area right now. Station, so station twelve's not just hinging upon the turnpike, but there will be a significant increase because there'll be a need for a response to that turnpike once those, uh, once that goes in. Because you will have, start having motor bucle accidents and things like that as well as development around the turnpike itself.
This question might be more for staff. When it comes to like funding this, high priority, medium priority, low priority, we'll be, be working that into like future PSST two or three maybe. It seems like a lot of positions, we talked in finance committee about even adding people, still doesn't cut down on overtime and other things, so I'm a little curious.
The, the, when we put a timeline to it, no arguments with the conclusions drawn and it's just gonna be a matter of how fast does revenue grow under the current PSST addition plus general fund revenue versus what other resources might be available. And, you know, we've been looking at legislation to provide for public safety districts, maybe as a vehicle, and that would be ad, ad verum-driven. Uh, there was some constitutional challenges to that piece of legislation, but, you know, if, if we, i- if, if in a good year, we might be able to add three positions maybe citywide. And you can see, y- you could consume all future positions for a long time to come in just police and fire based on our current revenue growth rates. So some additional funding mechanism is gonna be required to approach that timeline.
And then in the meantime, how will this study factor into our current budget talks when we're looking at different positions or some of it, like, has there been one that's come up before that's been mentioned in the study that is a high priority?
Um, and, and we'll take the lead as, as each director indicates what their position priorities would be, whether it's the next training body, where do you get, where do you get the, the best bang for that personnel buck? In, in terms of, you know, their ability to either reduce overtime, improve response times, improve training efficiencies, that kind of thing. And obviously your priorities are our priorities. If council says, hey, when you're, when you're kind of lining up all those requests for personnel, we want you to lean heavily on the public safety side, that, that absolutely influences the recommendation we make you.
Well, I would definitely wanna have a balanced approach to that because, you know, other things improve safety too, like infrastructure. And, you know, I think there was a request for a right-of-way manager, which would actually be great. And that's a complaint I get from constituents when there's issues in the right-of-way. I would also have a question for Shakira and...
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you have a timeline of when you might be done auditing overtime?
Um, haven't begun.
Oh, okay.
I anticipate the first engagement to begin in March though. I'll be presenting a draft plan at this finance committee this month.
So we may not have the opportunity to have that before our June budget adoption?
There would, there would be a lot of data by June. You have enough data to make a form.
So that could also help staff decide.
Oh, absolutely.
We're spending overtime on this one, we might need...
Our, our ability to say, we'll hold off on personnel recommendations until you have that data at your disposal, we amend that budget whenever you see fit. So if, if in July you have information that says, we think if we add a body here, it saves overtime over there, we can make that happen post initial adoption.
Councilmember, do you have a question?
Yes, does the university have any kind of a fire service for the airport?
They, they have prevention personnel that do inspections of university properties, but not, not emergency services.
I agree. That's where that trailer needs to be. And they're bare-filled, that's especially for them, but that's just me talking, so.
Same.
Anyway, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing, if I may, just it has to do with, so one of the things that was mentioned in the study, talking about plume vents, uh, which is what's, takes the toxic gases out from the automobile, from the vehicles that are in the truck rooms. Um, we have tried to maintain that, stay up on maintaining it, those are very expensive systems to maintain. And it's been a funding issue, trying to find the funding to be able to keep up with it, and just over time it has deteriorated. So it is something we're definitely very serious, as well as the gear washers. We just need to be able to have the funds to be able to, to keep, to get all those put into all the stations. Because, and a lot of the stations, it's gonna be a significant, um, change because we don't have plumbing in the right places and things like that. So it's gonna be, it's quite a task, especially for older stations like Station One. But it is something that we take serious and that we want to address, you know, with proper funding.
Gear washers and what was the other one? The exhaust, uh, takes the exhaust from the truck, vents it outside on your way out the door.
And that's in this year's budget request, and we've asked in the past for the, uh, the fifty-two people. One of the things that you run into with the overtime is our minimum staffing needs and then getting people to come in. We're facing some real challenges because we're, we're extending these people all the time and they're working many hours. So a lot of times, just, just trying to staff and getting the people to come in overtime, overtime's its own animal, and we can't force them to come in. So we're, we're spending a lot of time just to try to get people to come in overtime and meet our minimum staffing needs correctly.
And council, we can prioritize, um, put together a, like a modernization effort. These guys have a great understanding of which stations provide the greatest challenges in terms of needing that exhaust mechanism and/or the gear wash. It's the kinda stuff you wouldn't throw in your own washing machine at the house, be a little rough. Um, but yeah, we'll put those in a, in a priority order and try to start, we eat that elephant one bite at a time, that's all we'll get it done.
That's a health and safety thing for cancers and all kinds of other stuff, so yeah. Hurts our, hurts our employees.
You know, in some of those old station design where, uh, maybe it made sense from a space constraint, but yeah, let's put the bedrooms over the garage. And you fire up the trucks and they're venting exhaust up into your bedroom. We, we, you know, they think about things like that now that they didn't necessarily think about.
They have one two-story station, Fire Station Two.
Let's learn about police.
Let's do that. So let me start out with the high-level conclusions for police. Um, there are four. Um, first of all, field services, uh, patrol, the biggest part of the police department, needs to be, as I'll explain in a few minutes, refocused. We believe that all of our client communities are unique, but you guys are really unique. And there's, there's something about, um, the, the services that you're providing in this complex community that includes a lot of residential, a lot of commercial, a big university, casino, all sorts of things. It has an impact on the efficiency and effectiveness of how you deploy field personnel. So we've come up with a way to address that, that we'll talk to you about. Um, there are few areas that have fallen behind the workload in recent years. Uh, first is investigations, where the caseloads, um, the, the follow-up to important crimes and even, uh, relatively minor crimes, has fallen below the ability of investigators to investigate them properly. So many aren't getting the time that they could, some are being screened out, that could be followed up upon. Um, in both the property crime area and in person crime areas, so that needs to be addressed. Thirdly, a problem in most police departments in America today is that the emphasis in the last few years has been on making sure that sworn personnel strength is up to. And that's been challenged because it's been hard to recruit law enforcement personnel in the last few years. But the, the professional support, the civilian support, especially in communications, emergency communications, has been an issue, in part because of their own turnover problems, but also because of the growth in personnel and the emphasis on sworn, um, personnel. Um, as Robert mentioned, you're gonna be growing over the next ten years. That's obviously gonna have an impact on police services, not quite the facility impact, but certainly personnel needs will grow. It won't be fifty percent, that's a typo, but they will still be great. So let's talk about field personnel, first of all. So as, um, as I talk about this, the concept here to think about is that broadly speaking, there are two kinds of workloads for patrol, for field personnel. There are re- what we call reactive types of workloads and proactive types of needs and workloads. On the reactive side, it's calls for service. It's nine-one-one calls, uh, seven-digit telephone calls, it's flagging down an officer, an alarm. It's things like that, it's a request for police service. You've got a lot of choices in how you handle a call for service, you can delay it, you can handle, handle a report on the phone or the internet or something like that, but you gotta do something with it. Those types of things are well captured in the CAD system, we're able to document what those workloads are in, um, great, great detail. But as we'll talk in a little bit, the more important part of this, that, that's, I don't wanna minimize that, that's important. But i- is, when you're responding to a calls for, call for service, you're talking about handling something that happened a few minutes ago. The trick in law enforcement is to anticipate, uh, crime, other kinds of service needs in the community. Be deployed in a way, work with the community, be engaged with the community, so that you can anticipate those problems, but also make the community feel safer. And that is the true, uh, measure of an effective, uh, police department. So, uh, we look at calls for service, first of all, because you have to do something about it, it's well counted. It helps us get a handle on a very important part of that workload. So the first thing that we've got here, and there's a lot more detail in the report, of course, this shows, um, the top ten calls for service in Norman, um, by time of day. So as you look at the graph there, the darker blue shows, uh, more in frequent, uh, types of calls in each one of those categories. And, uh, as it goes to, to lighter blue to white, uh, it's less frequent. So you can see clearly that most of the workload happens, uh, in these top ten categories between twelve and three o'clock in the morning and late in the afternoon into the early evening. That is unusual for us. Usually it's the reverse. Uh, certainly early evening is busy, but afternoons are usually much busier. You are very busy in the early morning hours, in part because of, you know, the, the university activities, bars and casinos and things like that. So these top ten calls represent about forty percent of all the calls for service that you have in Norman. They're a mix of crimes, uh, larceny, uh, uh, things, disturbance, domestic disputes, which is the number one call for service, uh, things like that, uh, alarms maybe, depends on the alarm, if some are false, but it's still a call. Uh, some traffic mostly relating to, uh, accidents, cause most traffic activities are pro- more proactive in nature. But some s- service types of things as well. I don't know what's typical for a university community, but, uh, for a university community is gonna have a mix of crime and non-crime. Uh, most suburban types of communities we work with, there's usually not a crime in the top ten calls. It's usually code-infor- quasi-code enforcement disturbance maybe, types of things and welfare checks and things like that. Uh, so that's, that's our first clue that we had here about what's unusual in Norman. Some of the good news though, is that, um, response times are, well, you can underline this word, extraordinary in Norman. And what's extraordinary is not so much the high priority calls for service, you can see the median response times there. Uh, six and a half minutes for the most, the highest, uh, priority calls for service, down to nineteen minutes for the lowest priority calls for service. What's unusual for us is that the high priority calls, in just about every community you look at in the United States, they're gonna be five or six or seven minutes. But most communities have lower priority response times, that can be thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty minutes. And I, I've, I've worked for Oklahoma City in the past, they're gonna have that kind of, uh, response time, uh, performance. And what that says is, is another, it's an indicator that patrol has significant enough free, uncommitted or proactive time, so that they're not having to break off from one call to go to another call. They're free to go to those lower priority calls without having to cut off a call or wait till a call is over, uh, and they're through handling it, so they can go to this lower priority call. Uh, so from the community's perspective, in terms of getting rapid response, uh, this is exceptional. So remember on a median, it means that half of the calls are on one side of the line and the other half are on another. So it's not an a- an arithmetic average, which factors out, as you can see in those graphs on the right, all those things that maybe statistical flukes or something was not captured right in the CAD system and it was three days or something like that. So a little bit of background about how we, uh, analyze field patrol needs. So as I mentioned, the theory of effective patrol is that they need to have somewhat equal amounts of time on the reactive ti- things, calls for service, and the proactive things in terms of having time available to work with the community, anticipate problems, problem solve with the community and things like that, uh, with the, uh, the call handling time. In our work, not just our work, other consulting firms, research organizations, things like that, have found that if you have about forty-five percent of your time to be proactive, that proactive time happens in significant enough chunks of time that you can do something with it. If it's like thirty percent or less, it happens in twenty-second increments or something like that. But at these kinda levels, it happens in significant enough time that you can get out of your car, you can meet with a neighborhood group, you can problem solve with a citizen, those types of things. So as we look at Norman, um, this graph show, displays proactive time by day of week across the top going down, by hour of day going across and down. So it's in four-hour, uh, time increments. And the more green you are, the more proactive time you have. The interesting thing about Norman is that at sixty percent, on an, oh, the lower right-hand corner there, uh, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, at sixty percent, you have an extraordinary amount of proactive time. The problem is, it's not very well distributed. Uh, what is, what, when I said you guys are really unique, what is unusual for us, even for places that have a lot of nightlife, is that the two AM to six AM and ten AM time blocks on the weekends are not dark green. They are, in almost every community we work with, they're dark green seven days a week. Even in big cities and have lots of nightlife and things like that. So that's kind of an issue. There are a couple of other issues at other time blocks of the day where it gets down to twenty or thirty percent. And that, that happens, I mean, you can't have every, uh, time block completely green, there's gonna be some variation. And in most of our communities, that two o'clock in the afternoon through the early evening hours has that kinda thing where they are occasionally challenged to be proactive, and they're mostly handling calls more than they are doing, uh, anything else. So that, that I, I think is one of the more telling, uh, graphs that we came up with in this study.
Are you watching council meetings and that's why?
Good point, we'll, we'll go, we'll go back and look at that. So there, there's some more good news here, and that is that the patrol officers, um, are using their time to do proactive types of things. Now, there's one big asterisk caveat associated with this. This is a graph of self-initiated activity, officer-initiated activity, by actually hour of the day and day of the week. And when it's darker green, it's less, when it's orange and yellow, it's more. Unlike calls for service, proactive things aren't counted as well. Because they don't call in things if they just meet with a, a community member for thirty seconds. Uh, i- i- if there's a traffic activity, sure, that'll be counted. If they're doing some, uh, business check or meeting with an actual group or something, that'll be checked, but a lot of things don't get checked. Plus there's variations in what do you call something? If there's a strip mall and it's two o'clock in the morning and you're checking the locks, is that one proactive activity or seventeen? I mean, it's, it just depends. So with the information we have, this says they're really proactive. This says that, um, roughly about fifty percent of the call for services number is self-officer initiated activity. So it's twenty-one thousand pieces of activity that we can count, and probably more that we can't count. And I think what's interesting is that even in those times in which there isn't much proactive time, there's a fair amount of officer-initiated activity generated. Now, much of that may happen in areas where there isn't the nightlife, but it's still happening. So we, we have a plan, um, to reimagine field services in Norman. And it's something that many communities do that, uh, you don't do in Norman. Because of the variation in call for service workload and proac- resulting proactive activity, you ca- you can't easily staff your way out of that without adding a whole lot of people that you wouldn't need to add. Existing resources are sufficient if you have a more flexible approach to staffing field services. In many communities, and what we're recommending for Norman, is that you create, you can actually expand, but significantly expand, uh, a community services, uh, uh, division or section in the police department to be flexibly deployed, to be available to, uh, do hotspot types of things, to deal with problems, but also to deal with your special, uh, communities, your diverse communities here, like the university, things, things like that. And we'll explain a little bit more about that, uh, in a second. But as far as patrol is concerned, we're recommending that for the, 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 the so-called B cops, the people are deployed to respond to calls for service and to still be proactive, that you can do that with seventy, uh, officers, MPOs and sergeants. Versus the ninety-four that you've got right now. And that twenty-four staff get redeployed to that proactive, flexibly deployed, uh, group. So even with fewer staff, but deploying them differently, and this doesn't even count what you're doing with the twenty-four, um, people that would be reassigned to community services. But by moving staff, the, the seventy staff a little bit, so that you've got better coverage in the, uh, those late night hours and a little bit more in the afternoon hours, you can make this more green than that is green. So that's the same call for services workload that we showed you in the earlier chart, just with different personnel assigned to those hours and those days. So it addresses the weekend problem and addresses some of those hourly problems. So that's a little bit more about that community services section. So, um, again, what I mentioned is increase, I think, the, the excess personnel. And, you know, this is the number of staff in patrol that we had when we were, uh, started working with you. The number of people in the department, especially in patrol, are gonna vary day-to-day, uh, for a lot of reasons. Day-to-day things like sick leave, vacation, stuff like that, but also in terms of position turnovers and the time it takes to fill them. But at times we had it, it was in the, the nineties. And so we're recommending, uh, so you've got a community services section now, but it's basically just two officers and a lieutenant to do formalized kinds of crime prevention types of things with, uh, the community. So this is obviously a very different approach to community services that would, uh, deploy people on two ten-hour shifts, seven days a week, uh, in the numbers that you see there. So it's twenty-six, uh, officers and three lieutenants to be able to do that in four teams. So they would have a variety of functions. As I mentioned, they would be flexibly deployed during peak call for services time to help out with those things, but to provide proactive emphasis when officers are handling the calls for service. They would function as community liaison officers for community groups and problems in the community that need some sort of attention, that take more time than say five minutes, when somebody, uh, has some free time in their shift, and it may take two or three or four hours. University liaison is another, uh, uh, activity that they could be involved in. Special events, uh, problem-oriented policing kinds of units, um, things like that. Support to the community in a broad kinda way. And with those kinda teams, you've got on average four or five people, uh, on each of those shifts to be able to work as a team as needed, or to work individually, depending on what the problems were at that time, to address that. So it's take, it's creating more proactive time for a start, that isn't even shown on that previous chart, but it's using it. But it's using it when you need it and provide a broader and a deeper kind of proactive support to the community in the ways that I described. So moving on. In investigations, similar to field services, we have developed. An approach for each investigative specialty where we've like homicide or. Domestic assaults or property crimes of various kinds. The average amount of time that it takes for each type of case by breaking down the activities. That are associated with interviewing witnesses, interviewing victims, collecting evidence, doing internet checks. All those kinds of things, working with prosecution, those types of things. And puts a count on them and an average time associated with it and builds up a workload base. You divide that by net availability like you would for patrol and you get the number of investigators you have. So we have a standardized way of doing it, but we work with each department because each state's a little bit different, first of all. And each community is a little bit different in terms of expectations about follow up. So it's it's somewhat tailor fit for your agency, like all of the rest of our clients. So the result of all of that is a need for six additional detectives to handle the workload. And it falls in both person crimes and property crimes, but most of them are property crimes. And adding a third lieutenant because that number increases the span of control for supervisory oversight. Of assigning cases and monitoring cases and knowing when to to inactivate them or clear them out or something like that. It's not all sworn personnel. A growing trend in police departments today is to provide civilian eye support. There's a lot of things that detectives do that you don't need a sworn member of the department to do. Doing internet checks, doing criminal history checks, doing crime analysis, doing all sorts of things like that. That us trained civilian paraprofessional can handle. So we've recommended hiring a civilian investigative analyst and a crime analyst to help them do that. The crime analyst has usefulness, not just in investigations, but also on patrol. To look at hotspots and problems that are computer, do the top ten calls, things like that in support of field services. There are additional staff also needed in victims' support, victims advocacy and in forensics, crime scenes. And lab types of things. Special investigations narcotics has needs for two detectives to fill out their teams to get more coverage in Norman and to work better regionally. In communications, so this is one of the tougher areas in public safety today is. Keeping emergency communication staff. It's a tough job, a lot of vicarious stress. There's depending on the community, there's not a lot of breaks. And the pay is sometimes an issue. And so turnover is quite high. It varies nationally between twenty and thirty percent a year. I mean, just think about that. And you aren't quite that high, but you do have the time you're doing the report, the end of last year. The need for nine additional staff to staff the consoles. Plus one supervisor. This is as much an over hire situation in order to get the staff that you need to cover all those calls that. I was talking about all the other things that they do as well. Animal welfare position. Some modest needs to hire an additional staff position, but more importantly, and a veterinary technician. But importantly, on the animal care side to cross train staff between administrative and desk, front desk types of workloads. And working in the in the shelter. In personnel and training. Unlike say before twenty twenty, it's a lot harder to recruit foreign police officers today. And you don't just put out the ad and here they come a thousand at a time. You have to work harder at it now because. It's a harder sell. There's a lot of other things that people want to do in their lives. And I think especially during twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, there was a lot of negative press that has impacted. The ability to recruit and hire. So you need to broaden your outreach for new employees locally ideally. Because it's good to have the police department be representative of the community that they're working with. But also using social media, but you need to make it easier for the applicant as well. By using remote interviews, online types of approaches, multiple tests, testing periods and being more flexible in that way. Once they're on board, develop employee specific career development plans, not just here's what you need to do to be an MPO. Here's what we're going to do to support you to become an MPO and and develop succession planning in the department. Something that many departments are waking up to the need for is focusing on the health and wellness of their employees. Obviously, law enforcement is a very stressful job. And even if you've got an employee assistance program is directing people into being a sounding board into various kinds of ways that they. Their emotional, psychological, physical needs can be met importantly, working with the families. Of law enforcement personnel because they have needs as well because of the stress that is brought home. And the fears that they have for their employees. So it's a very important position to coordinate. Formal programs that the city may offer, but also to have a law enforcement focus to those things. So also in community outreach, some modest needs to increase the traffic unit by two traffic. Two traffic investigators for accident investigations so that those things don't pile up. A lieutenant position over that to help manage the oversight of enforcement investigations and better tracking. You also need a lieutenant for school resources because of the span of control for the number of SROs you have, school resources officers. Excuse me, you have in a community. So that's it for current needs and I'll summarize that in a second, but let me just talk about how we did the the projections. For police. So we work with community development, your planning staff. To get an understanding of what kind of developments is going to happen in the next ten years in the city in terms of residential development, commercial development. Special kinds of developments in this community that you're going to be covering, et cetera. And we work with that to convert it into staffing. So some of the types of positions I've talked about here this after this evening. Patrol and investigations, for example, are direct conversions of you increase the population, you can expect certain things to happen. Certain rate of calls for service, certain rates of crime, but there are other, you can't do the whole department that way. Some functions like support positions are a function, are really kind of a relationship of one thing to another. More calls, more record staff. Those types of things. Spans of control are a function of the number of employees you have, patrol, investigations, records, et cetera. The more line employees you have, the more need you have for first line supervision to manage workload and employee affairs. Some functions are non scalable. You only have one chief. So what we did is we looked at the population. And use various rates of call for service in terms of what you're generating now in the residential areas and in the commercial areas. Adjusted that for things like special events and things like that to. Convert that to calls for service and to, when I say index crimes, those are the major crimes. The the old FBI classification of seven major crimes, homicide, sexual assault, robbery, et cetera. So so about a ten percent increase. So what's important here? Is not five years from now saying that Matrix Consulting says we should have X. It's like this is a model we developed in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five to say what happens if what? The city tells us is going to happen, it may happen faster, it may happen slower, it may happen bigger, it may happen less big, I don't know. So you need to monitor this stuff every year. That's what you have councils and budgets for. But given the crystal ball we have now. We are recommending. So there's two things to keep in mind here. There that the blue column there is the plus or minus people you need over ten years, but that's from our recommended level. Not from where you were at the end of last year. So yes, this first chart is just sworn personnel. So it's yes, it's sixteen from the recommended level now, but it's eleven. Positions recommended, net recommended increase. So again, nothing in patrol. It's all investigations in some of the and lieutenants and some of these support types of things. On the professional positions. More significant needs, short term. As you can see, what is that nineteen positions recommended net compared to current? But you're catching up. And then from that point. Only five. Mostly in communications. So lastly, there's some facilities and technology impacts from all of this. So obviously there's needs now and there's not facilities space for all of them right now. Assuming you're able to hire them in a short period of time as you can. But those needs are going to grow over time, as you just saw. So you need to start the planning for new facilities now. Part of that. Decision is going to be. Any extent to which you're going to decentralize services. And that's an issue that we couldn't really address in this study, but obviously if you have one big facility. And everybody's in there, you need one big facility, but if you have substations and things like that and remote facilities, that has a different consequence. But so the first step is really doing a facility needs assessment for the department. And that's something that you've actually started. The police department has been an avid adopter of new technologies, body worn cameras, license plate, automated license plate readers, things like that. But there are some additional needs that you have, public cameras and that need is growing and. Valuable resource in terms of police department workflows, especially for big special events and things like that. Video feed integration software for all the various private and public videos that you get to be able to amalgamate all of that. Excuse me, for analytical purposes and then social media software so that you're able to mine social media in a way that's useful for you for intelligence and things like that. That in a very rapid way was a hundred and eighty three pages.
No, yes.
So the that last part, the facilities needs assessment, that's happening independent of this, is that what's going on or?
There are lots of conversations going on facility related. We recognize the current police department has some functional obsolescence to it. We've actually been approached by a group that said, hey, we'd like to buy it. And we thought, okay, to construct that much square footage in a more modern configuration is probably a twenty five million dollar nut. To start the conversation and just, you know, initial exploration about if not there, then where? And could there be another vehicle to? Help in the construction of a modern police. Headquarters like TIF revenue potentially. So yeah, lots of conversations happening. As staffing changes. How much space do you really need? How much? We know a lot of that work happens in a cop car with a laptop and a radio. How much additional square footage could be developed at the NIC site? Not that that's a a lower cost alternative to remodel that concrete tilt up old National Guard armory. That would be plenty expensive on its own, but I know they're looking at lots of alternatives and opportunities for. You know, ensuring we've always got a downtown presence like we do with HQ right here. And if we were to add those bodies, where's the most logical place for them to be housed?
The question about, you know, we have. Have, there's funding to do some remodeling. Municipal court moved out of the police station, dispatch is out of, are they all out now? They're all out of there. So there's all this extra space in there now, extra. But it's one of, it's a big municipal court, so you have to gut it out, remodel, do everything. And is it more costs? One of the questions being for council, is it more cost effective to try to spend a few million dollars remodeling that building? Or building something new that's up to code and current codes and standards and. Specifically built to the current needs of police departments. Instead of nineteen eighty needs of police departments. And then same thing with fire stations also like what is, what are the problems with each one of them? And which ones need to be completely replaced with a new station, not an additional, but. Fire station one need to be, a new station be built, fire station two, et cetera. So just knowing, yeah, what the condition of the buildings are, which ones need to be replaced, what's wrong with them now? A timeline for when that could happen, I think is part of what I've been trying to get at for sure.
Well, I I think we can add value there and as council considers. Maybe alternative funding sources to close that gap on the personnel side. To recognize even with the public safety sales tax, it was a substantial component dedicated to equipment and facilities. The facilities needs. And we recognize how fire departments grow since they don't just spend all day driving around waiting for the next call for service. So we've got a lot of homework done on where, you know, station nine, station ten, eleven, twelve go. Roughly speaking on the map, we don't necessarily have that zeroed in for police HQ. I would estimate we could build the next fire station. We're looking at seven million dollars plus or minus. The design will probably be different. We learned through COVID. That, you know, dorms probably not the best approach, but individual. You know, rooms, so they're making as much separation as possible as to not affect everybody on a shift in a in a station. And then, you know, PD, how big a footprint, because we recognize with all the vehicles coming and going, it's a pretty big footprint. We need to account for and it needs to be. It needs to be less strategically located than fire stations in terms of where on the map to. Minimize that, yeah, because most of those bodies who are responding are already somewhere out there on that map. But yeah, let us. Put together what we think would be logical. It's probably closer to being a finished product on the fire side than on PD. But as council considers alternative funding sources for the staffing side, we might as well have that facility side right behind it.
So that assessment could include, facilities assessment would include potential costs for those three new stations.
Absolutely, and we know.
Redoning existing stations.
Yeah, some of our.
And then what it would cost to actually build a new police department or. Substation or whatever.
Yeah, there are such projects in the metro where we don't have to go too far out to get pretty current cost estimates.
Yes, you're you're right on track. The we are trying to find. A little bit of money just to get some paint on the walls and make it inhabitable. Because we know even if we magically found twenty five million dollars today, it's a five to eight year project. So we certainly are working to try to get that at least usable for the short term. And I'll let Richard expand more, but based on their evaluation. The the police department is not, that's not going to be an option. It would require too much remodeling. It's not AD appropriate. So that's that's certainly, that building is off the table. Now the location certainly is, and that's a great point. We want a presence downtown, do we want substations? So there certainly is work to do there. And we will absolutely be bringing forward in this budget cycle, a funding request to do that needs assessment. Just like say we may have described, we really need at least a baseline of where do we go and what do we do? And that's what Matrix is recommending. So we're going to certainly bring that forward.
Okay. And then, yeah, I could definitely see a patrol being somewhere and then having just a downtown. HQ storefront or something, but like we saw in Lexington, Kentucky, we visited them. And so you you mentioned too that you guys have been doing this twenty two years.
Just in this firm.
Just in this firm, okay. And so you've, have you made this similar type of recommendation to other police departments about staffing? How this plan that you've put out to us?
Not quite like this. I mean, yeah, so flexible deploy proactive units is not uncommon in this, starting in this size department. Because there are needs, proactive types of things, that's some of the things that I mentioned, that you can't deal with. some of the things that I mentioned, that you can't deal with between calls. They take an hour or two, or an entire shift. And so unless you have a team, a group of people who can work in that kind of way, you can't do it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just wanted to get a little clarity around, create a health and wellness position to focus on non-technical support to staff. Could that be like a 988 person? And I'll say this, I think it was January 2023, we were discussing with Oklahoma Department of Mental Health about the iPads that are deployed, and they did say that first responder types are not likely to hit the button that's meant for them. So, yeah, I just wanted a little more clarity on that kind of position.
It's broader than that. So as I mentioned, it's, it's physical health, and helping them with that, getting gym memberships, getting tailor-fitting trainers, those types of things. It's emotional health of the employee and family, and coordinating services in that way, and psychological health. And I mean, there are lots of programs out there, but getting people into them in a safe and confidential kind of way can be a challenge sometimes. But again, I'm stressing that a lot of departments are realizing that you need to have that positive outreach, coordinate city services and regional services to be able to do that, but also to be a resource for the families.
Then I heard 25 million, it sounds like to decentralize, did I hear that clearly?
That would be to replace the current police department HQ building with a modern facility. So the insides would look completely different, just based on how they're operating today, recognizing dispatch has already been relocated, but not conceptually to just operate out of a series of substations. And, you know, each model, whether you've got a central HQ, or you've got a bunch of substations, the staffing is different, based on how much admin staff you keep at every substation, or some substations are on demand during, you know, daytime hours. So there's a, there's a whole bunch of options out there, in terms of what, what these folks think works best for how they do police business.
If I can add one thing to that, on the centralization versus decentralization decision, it's not just about decentralizing patrol personnel. A substation's going to need some sort of command staff, it's going to need administrative support, so there's additional staff associated with decentralization that you don't have a centralization.
And then maybe even new IT challenges?
True.
That they can conquer in one building versus multiple IT challenges?
In terms of security and things like that, of course, yeah.
Okay, well, that makes sense for the facility needs assessment being budgeted. How much do we expect that will cost?
Any idea what you guys will stick in the request? They're working on that as we speak.
$6 million.
There's the first substation, thank you.
I'm going to guess in the neighborhood, don't hold me too, but in the neighborhood of $100,000, roughly.
That's actually a good estimate.
How'd I do, was that close?
He was going to say 80,000, but now it's 100.
No, 40,000.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And another, another division of Matrix is working with Mr. Francisco on internal cost allocation modeling going on right now. So we've been keeping not just these two guys busy, but other people out of the Matrix that's busy too.
Well, thank you for doing that, make us more efficient, more. Spending your taxpayers' money, but, all right, I asked, oh, yes.
What are the next steps? Where do we go from here?
During the budget development process, as we start to look at, you know, will revenue projections come to fruition? We had a little ripple in our usual trend analysis we use to kind of come up with what we think 2025, 26 revenues look like, when the state decided to discontinue the collection of sales tax on groceries from the state's side. And that didn't go smoothly. And we're thinking, we're finally getting back to what it's really supposed to look like. And basically, what we, what we're hoping to see is some uptick in general fund growth, because it's only going to come down to just a matter of how fast.
And we're already having.
Can we pay for the growth?
Growth.
Well, and, you know, the kind of the sad reality, the legislature and the pension board said, hey, we're going to increase funding for the stability of, you know, the police pension system, so we'll have a $400,000 cost increase if nothing else changes, that we'll have to account for right off the top, because that's not.
I think it would be real helpful if we were able to use a portion of property tax to cover the cost of public safety, 24/7 service, like police and fire, especially when we have rural fire stations that are in areas that have almost no sales tax collecting businesses at all, and we're trying to pay for those stations using sales tax revenue that's going up and down all the time.
A logical nexus can be developed, absolutely.
That would be helpful, I think, it would be more reliable anyway. So will this, these reports be something the AIM committee sees, or will it be part of their?
Well, you know, that, when council said comprehensive, boy, there probably has never been one more comprehensive, not just sewer water, stormwater, transportation, parks and open space, land use, and public safety to follow along with those population trends, although done on a separate track, can absolutely be included in the final package, just to recognize, what do we get out of the comprehensive land use plan? Well, where and when do we think, you know, sewer capacity will get expanded and water infrastructure will be expanded? And now we've seen that, along with that population growth, will come the demand for those public safety response services. So I think it fits in beautifully with the final package.
It goes really hand-in-hand with the land use stuff, because I think what data, what I was seeing in there was the urban, the more denser the parts of the city, the faster the police-fire response is, and it looks like police response is pretty quick everywhere, for the most part, but the less densely populated you get in Norman, it seemed like that's further, and more and more time that takes the fire department. So in thinking about future growth, you know, we can plan for it to be in this certain area, but what's our ability to actually service that area with a new fire station and staff it?
Yeah, a lot of efficiencies to be gained in that, in that higher density, in terms of response time. Now, they'll tell you, Station One is the busiest station, hands down, because it's right here in the center of town.
And there's more people, yeah, right.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, guys.
You too.
I'm going to do item two here, which is consideration of journey, so those people cannot be in the executive session, if you'll please leave now.